For the implications to be followed by a failure of allegiance. Let us pray. Dear Lord, we come to thank you for this day and for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We ask your blessing, dear Lord, upon our first responders, our military, men and women, dear Lord, who are assured in the safety, dear Lord, and the orderly process of this wonderful country in which we live. We ask your blessing, dear Lord, upon this meeting that we are about to undertake. And this we ask in the righteous name of Jesus we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Now, our business for this call session is for Mr. Hankins, our board attorney, to address our campaign regulations and ethics. To that end, we will ask Mr. Hankins if he will come and set the ground rules of this function. Thank you, Mr. Hankins.
Mayor, thank you, and members of the board and citizens. I have a PowerPoint presentation which I'm going to use, which I hope you can see. Stand right here. The notice of the special meeting, this is a special meeting of the board requested by two members of the board. Just so you all know, the state law, one of the statutes with respect to special meetings of municipal governing bodies says that a special meeting can be called either by the mayor or by any two members of the board. So that happened in this case. And the notice of the special meeting says that the purpose, statute says, you must specify a purpose for a special meeting. And it says, "To discuss campaign regulations and ethics." And then it has some language that I asked the clerk to include in the notice, and I'll tell you why. It says, "All candidates are encouraged to attend and open to the public." All public meetings are open to the public, and citizens are invited warmly to attend. And it says, "Candidates and other citizens are invited to submit questions and issues for discussion to the town clerk." I asked her to include that in the notice. Let me read you some of the questions that were sent by citizens to the clerk. And I'll try to answer them, and then I'll start this PowerPoint presentation. It says, "Why is a special meeting being conducted to discuss campaign regulations and ethics prior to an election?" "Because two members of the Board of Alderman requested that the board meet and hear a discussion about what the law allows and requires," which is all I intend to do. "Will the State Board of Elections, and I would add the Cumberland County Board of Elections, be conducting this meeting to discuss campaign regulations and ethics? If not, who will be addressing the issues?" I'm doing it as town attorney. I have talked with the director of the Cumberland County Board of Elections twice about this, just to make sure first that she didn't have any concerns about this. She doesn't. Also invited her to come, and she respectfully declined. But she said, "You go." And I did ask her a couple of questions to make sure I understood a couple of things correctly, and so I appreciate her assistance with that. Third question was, "Why are candidates running for office encouraged to attend this special meeting?" I would encourage any citizen of Spring Lake to attend the meetings of the board, including this special meeting. And candidates, incumbents, and those who are non-incumbents, I know are particularly interested. So everyone was invited. Shouldn't the meeting be for board members only when it comes to campaign regulations and ethics? No. Any and every public meeting is open to everyone and welcome to all. Why are candidates and the public asked to submit questions and issues for discussion when the purpose is campaign regulations and ethics? The reason I made that request and asked the clerk to include that in the notice is very simple. To give me a heads up on what folks would like me to discuss and what questions citizens would like me to answer, and frankly, so I could do some research to make sure I could answer the questions correctly and actively. So that's why. And everyone had an opportunity to submit questions. So those, I think, are the answers to all those questions. There are several other questions that were asked that I had already planned to address in this presentation. So let me do that. I guess I need to point this this way. So, when is the election? I'm going to talk generally here for a few minutes about municipal elections, then particularly about the Spring Lake municipal election. In the case of Spring Lake, the election is the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November. And that's November 5th, 2019. We have municipal elections every two years in odd number of years. Why? Because that's what the statute says, and it's what the Spring Lake Town Charter says. And I'm going to talk about that charter in a more minute. Who can run? Very simple. This is addressed by the North Carolina Constitution and by some statutes and by the Spring Lake Town Charter. And so the answer is, anyone who is 21 years old and is a qualified and registered voter and resides within the town of Spring Lake. Anyone who meets those qualifications can run. And if elected by the voters, they serve.
Can I ask one question, Mr. Jones?
Mayor, may I?
I think you set the rule that you would do the free of the...
I'm happy to have clarified questions. I'm happy to have clarified questions.
Thank you, because you did simply ask questions. Just while we're on this, so I can remember, I wrote it down. Where it says you must be a resident of the town of Spring Lake, there is more to it. I've also called the Board of Elections, and you should reside. It's also in our documentation that they gave us, six months or more reside here in Spring Lake.
That's the qualification to register to vote.
Yes.
Right. So you have to be a registered voter. That's right. Although, I will say this. Some of you may know that we have in the state and in Cumberland County something called "one-stop voting." It's part of the early voting process. I'm going to get to that in a minute, but we'll answer it now. As part of the one-stop voting procedure, if someone has not registered to vote previously, the law allows them to go to the early voting site, which is only the Cumberland County Board of Elections office, and register then and there on the spot and vote in the election. You have to have proof of residence to do that, but that is allowed?
Yes.
So what offices are on the ballot in Spring Lake this year? Spring Lake, under the charter, has direct election of the mayor, the office of mayor, and five members of the Board of Alderman. What are the terms? Spring Lake Charter says that everyone, mayor, all the men, all the women, are elected for two-year terms. That's different in some other municipalities. So what are the types of elections that are authorized by state law? There are four of them. Partisan elections. Anybody know which of our cities, big ones, have partisan elections? Anybody?
San Diego, Charlotte.
It tends to be the bigger cities. Just a small handful, Charlotte and Winston-Salem are the two largest. That means you register, when you file for office, you file to run as a Democrat or Republican. Obviously, Spring Lake does not have that form. Second type is nonpartisan election and runoff. City of Raleigh has that. The main election was Tuesday last week in Raleigh. And there was the possibility of a runoff, which the candidates who did not receive the highest number of votes did not call for. So the election is about to be filed in Raleigh and the other cities that have that. So what is nonpartisan primary in an election? Durham, for one, has that. Still nonpartisan. You just file to run, you don't run as a Democrat or Republican. Their first is a primary, which was in those cities last week. And the purpose of the primary is to narrow down the field to two people for each contested office. Still nonpartisan. And then the general election is held in November. So nonpartisan plurality is the simplest type of municipal election. People file for office. You don't run as a Democrat or Republican. You just file, and then one election is held on November 5th, this year, Tuesday, November 5th. Whoever gets the most votes wins. If there are 15 candidates for five seats on the board, the candidates who receive the five highest number of votes win. No majority required. Very simple. And what type does Spring Lake have?
Nonpartisan.
Nonpartisan plurality. Sorry?
I said, "We're not Democrat or Republican."
Nonpartisan plurality. Right.
But I have a question. If that comes up, if a citizen just asks, "What are they?", that's not wrong for them to ask?
Wrong to ask?
And it's not wrong for them to say?
Newspapers don't print it. I mean, you're all registered voters, either as a Democrat or Republican or unaffiliated, maybe some other political party. It is public information, but you run, you don't run based on party in that type of election. So in Spring Lake, nonpartisan plurality elections, one election, November 5th. Candidates who receive the most votes win, no majority required. Spring Lake has something else, because the charter says so. Five members of the Board of Alderman are not elected from districts, unlike some other cities. You all run at large. It's just a question. Whoever receives the highest number of votes. Filing hearing was in July, and a good number of folks filed for either mayor or Board of Alderman. Board of Elections staff, when the candidates filed, gave each filed candidate at least two pieces of information. A municipal election guide for candidates, which is several pages, and a copy of some state statutes about placement of campaign signs or political signs. I'm going to talk about some of that. So why does Spring Lake have that particular type of election? Because the charter says so. Now, who enacted the charter? The General Assembly, the state legislature. And the General Assembly can change the town charter. There's another way to amend the town charter. The General Assembly can change it to go to a different type of election, to go to one of those other three, to change the terms of office to four years, maybe four-year staggered terms, increase or decrease the number of members of the board, or draw election districts. So the candidates are elected, or maybe three of the five are elected from election districts, and the other two aren't, all kinds of possibilities. The General Assembly could do that, but the charter could be amended locally. And this was done once in the case of Spring Lake. The General Assembly has given municipal governing bodies authority under General Statute 160A-101, a list of things that the board can propose to change in the charter by adopting an ordinance. The board could put that to a referendum. If you don't put it to a referendum, 10% of the voters could petition for a referendum, and then people vote on the proposed changes. So any of those changes that I mentioned could possibly be made. The local charter change that happened in Spring Lake years back was what? Do you not know that? Looking at here, too. You know how the charter was amended locally? Changed the form of government to go to the council manager form of government. That was...
Excuse me. Would you repeat that? Excuse me. Repeat that. Could you repeat?
Years ago, I think 1977, '79, somewhere in there, under this statute, the Spring Lake Board of Alderman adopted an ordinance proposing to change the form of government, the administrative form of government, to go to the council manager form of government, to create the Office of Town Manager, in other words. And that charter change was made.
Okay. So we've got a referendum that is...
I don't remember, I don't know whether a referendum is held. I just honestly don't know the answer to that. Okay. So who administers elections? Town of Spring Lake does not administer elections. By state law, local elections are administered by the County Board of Elections.
When you say administered, what does that entail when you administer?
That means that's the place candidates go to register or to file, to run. If candidates have questions about what the law allows and requires, the County Board of Elections or the State Board are the places to call, and they're good at providing information and advice. All those people you see at polling place on Election Day, many of them are employees of the County Board of Elections, part of the staff. But many of them are volunteers or are working part-time for the Board of Elections to help in conducting the election. That's, all of that is administering the election.
I have a question.
Yes.
If the town, so you're saying the town of Spring Lake does not administer this, so the town of Spring Lake has nothing to do with the election or so on? Well, if that's the case, my next question is, with us holding this meeting here right now as we're doing it, are we not out of order because this is not town business?
It's certainly a matter of public concern that involves...
I understand that.
Governance in Spring Lake, in my opinion, the board's not out of order in doing this. You know, folks might have different opinions about whether this should or should not be done, but it's a matter that involves the governance of the town and a matter that's in public interest.
I'm totally confused, because if we're not in charge of it, then how can we regulate if it's not regulated?
You're not, and you can't.
Okay. So this is considered, and you saying this is considered town business, since we can't do anything with it?
It's certainly a worthy subject if the...
I understand it's a worthy subject, and you're right. It should be, it should be out there. My question is, why is it out there by our attorney that it's supposed to be doing town business and not by the Board of Elections? Who knows this? So my thing is, the taxpayers are paying for this, but it's not town business. So why wouldn't we have this session set up like a workshop, where the Board of Elections will come in and give the meeting for free? That, I'm just, that's my concern.
Let me just say that three sentences. I do know a good bit about this. I've taught election law at the university level. I did invite the director of the County Board of Elections, if she wished to come, either staying here with me or to conduct the session. She respectfully declined. I was asked to do it as town attorney, and that's all I know.
Yeah, I understand all of that, and that sounds good. But at the end of the day, when you're talking about being a good steward of town's money, this is not town business. So we're spending money to have our town attorney to give information to us that the Board of Elections, nine times out of 10, have already given us for those candidates that ran and candidates that are officials now. So now we're spending out the money because of that. So that was, that's my concern. But I mean, we can move on, I want to hold up, because we are...
Thank you. Thanks, that's a question. So early voting and absentee ballots. I mentioned early voting. That does start on October 16th, which is Wednesday this week. Runs through November 1st. Are absentee ballots available so that citizens who are not able to go to the polls or out of state, maybe out of the country, particularly in a border and a military town? The statute says that municipal governing bodies can provide for absentee voting by adopting a resolution. And I verified with the clerk that the Spring Lake Board, obviously, adopted that resolution years ago, and it continues. So, and I spoke with the director of the Board of Elections today, and she verified that several folks have requested absentee ballots, and those can be requested through October 29th. So folks can vote by absentee ballot. And as I said, and I'll say again, the one-stop voting that we have in this state, someone who is not yet registered can register and vote by going to the County Board of Elections office between October 16th and November 1st and proving their residential address, registering, and voting. So campaign signs. One of the pieces of information that candidates were given were copies of some state statutes provided by the County Board of Elections. So that, those statutes, primarily that one, GS 136-32, says that candidates for any election can place signs on the right-of-way of state system roads. That's like the major road out here, and there are other state system roads in Spring Lake. Can place those signs 30 days before the start of early voting, and they are supposed to be removed within 10 days of the election. So candidates, please plead with all of you to do that.
That's right.
At least 10 days after the election. You have to have permission of the abiding property owner whose home or business or institution you are putting the sign in front of. Even though it's a state highway right-of-way, they have the right to tell you no. The owner of the abiding property. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Just to state that, which is very important, and your salary is not separate. When we call you, it's not separate, just because you gave this meeting. I think you know that, and we should know it as well. But with the property, have to have permission. We were going around, and it was some property owners that stated that signs were placed, and I think this is very good education for us so that the citizens understand that we understand. But if we don't know, that's why it's very important, because we don't know everything when it comes to campaigning. But they stated that some people have placed signs in their yard as well as in front of their communities, and nobody asked. But one of the candidates went and asked, and he said, "You were, you the ones when they came and asked us, when we have all these signs out here."
Let me give you a good example of why that's important in Raleigh. If you've been there, you've driven on Western Boulevard, and you see the WRL TV studio. Now, does WRL want any political signs in front of their property, its property, on a state system road? No. And they routinely say no. And if candidates put them there anyway, they're removing signs. And I'm going to tell you, I'm going to get to removable signs in a minute.
I wanted to address something that Alderman and Southern said about the salary. And I just want to make note that the attorney is paid $3,000 a month in retention, which includes 10 hours of work. Anything after 10 hours of work is $190 an hour. So even though he's here, he's here. If he's already seated, his 10 hours of work, which that $3,000 monthly retainer is in, then we're paying him $190 an hour to do this. I'm just going to back on up on what Ms. Southern just said.
I've spent some time doing some research, not much.
I know, you wouldn't be here if you didn't know. We're not here to dispute that, so we can move on with the...
You should have never brought it up.
You did.
No, you did, yes.
All right.
Mr. Hankins?
Yes.
This is your meeting.
Thank you.
And you can, at any time, reinforce the agreed-upon proceedings?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So signs in those state rights-of-way have to be three feet away from pavement. That's obviously for safety reasons, and clear up the roadway. They cannot be huge, or as my children would say, humongous signs. They can be no higher than 42 inches. And there is a square inch limitation on size. Obviously, large signs, they could block people's view and be unsafe. So that's the reason.
I have a question.
Mayor.
The post of our last sentence. How would you enforce that?
I'm about to get to this issue of people taking signs or removing signs.
Okay.
That statute says that it is a class-three misdemeanor, that's the lower-level misdemeanor, which allows up to 30 days in jail or a fine of $200 for, let me just read you what the language says. That's the gist of it. But the statute says, "Class-three misdemeanor to steal or unlawfully remove a political sign that is lawfully placed." If it's too big, if it's in front of someone's property and they don't want it there and did not give the candidate permission, it has not been lawfully placed, and the property owner is entitled to remove. But if the sign, the candidate or whoever, some volunteer for the campaign, put the sign in a place where it is entitled to be, then if someone else comes along and takes, steals, destroys the sign, they have committed a criminal misdemeanor. Police departments don't vigorously enforce that for several reasons. They don't want to be in the middle of political campaigns. Primarily, it's a problem of proof. I'm a lawyer, and I've spent a lot of time when I was young in criminal courts. You've got to have direct evidence, eyewitness evidence, or someone who sees someone unlawfully remove any sign has to be willing to go swear out a warrant at the magistrate's office. It hardly ever happens. But it's silly. It is a misdemeanor criminal violation, and people ought to use to leave other people's property alone. That's all I'm saying.
Could you say that again?
People ought to leave people, other people's property alone.
Thank you. Did you say the fine again with the fines?
Criminal, uh... Class-three misdemeanor. I said 30 days, actually, maximum 20 days in jail and/or a $200 fine.
So somebody owes me about $200,000.
You know, that happens often in elections. It never should happen. So that's all I'm, all I'm going to say about that. So those are, that's state law and DOT regulations. The Board of Transportation adopted this regulation at the bottom. In addition to the sign rules, how about a political banner that someone tries to hang over a state highway? Can't do that. It's a traffic hazard. And the Board of Transportation has adopted a rule or regulation saying you cannot hang political signs or any other signs over the state system road right-of-way. The Spring Lake Board of Alderman could adopt some ordinances about placement of political signs in street right-of-ways that are not on the state highway system. Most of the streets in Spring Lake are on the town system, not the state system. But so far, the board has not adopted many ordinances, there are not many provisions in the Spring Lake Code of Ordinances about placement of political signs, campaign signs. And what that means is there certainly is no prohibition on placement of campaign signs along town system street right-of-ways. And you go out to the end of Ruth Street, that's a likely place, and you see a lot of political signs. So, one of the questions they asked was, "How about placing signs on town property like the Town Rec Center? Or even, in my view, worse, Town Hall?" The answer, as far as I see, since there's no ordinance that prohibits that, is signs could be placed there. Now, I have a, I have a personal opinion about what's appropriate and what's not. I noticed there are, as I drove in this evening, there are no political signs in front of either the Rec Center or Town Hall, which is exactly the way I believe it ought to be. I am, I'm concerned that if candidates were to place signs in front of either one of these two buildings, some people might believe, incorrectly, but believe that somehow the town government has endorsed the candidates who've signed something. And I don't, and I don't think anyone ought to create that impression. That's my opinion. I just think it's preferable to avoid... I just think it's preferable to avoid, um, candidates placing signs on public property that properly. And I congratulate candidates for not doing it. All the comments I'm making are general comments. I've actually seen some issues in some other municipalities. Some, you know, my background, I was the Executive Director of State Municipal League for some years. I've seen some problems in other municipalities where incumbent elected officials misuse, and I think abuse, the power of their office with respect to elections. You also know, we have a discussion going on in Washington about that. So, I hope in North Carolina, we don't get into that. But I wrote this today, and I wrote it carefully. It is wrong, and I believe unlawful, for any incumbent elected official to abuse the power of his or her office in support of their personal election campaign. Uh, the statutes are clear about some things, silent about some other things. The statutes say clearly, no use of public funds, supplies, or equipment for campaign purposes. And we all understand the reason for that. I don't see that the statutes say this, but past a point, this is unlawful too. There should not be any undue pressure on government employees to contribute or support the candidate. And I'm gonna talk about statute in a minute, uh, that is a little more clear. Now, what happens if an elected official abuses the power of their office? Well, at federal level, what's that called? What's the remedy called? An impeachment. And removal from office. There is a local government version of that. And it happened close by last year. Remember this word, a motion? When a member, then member of the Fayetteville City Council, oh, he got into some difficulty and eventually resigned. But city councils started an o- a motion proceeding to remove that elected official. One of my law partners was retained by the City of Fayetteville to advise the council about that, because appropriately, the city attorney did not want to be in the middle of that. So, she retained our law partner. Council member resigned. But hypothetically, think about some other municipality, where one of the incumbent elected officials leans on some of the town employees. And tells them, "You gotta support me in this election, or afterwards, if you don't, if I win, you're a big problem." That's wrong, and I think it's so wrong that it's unlawful and would be a proper subject for one of those a motion and removal from office procedures. This does not happen much. So, let me talk about something that probably not many folks know enough about. The Spring Lake Board of Aldermen adopted a, a Code of Ethics. Did this several, two, three years ago, because the General Assembly amended the statutes to require city councils, boards, to adopt a local code of ethics. And the one adopted for Spring Lake follows a model from either the league municipalities or the school of government, I don't know which, one or the other. Um, and it's, it's very detailed, and it's appropriate. Um, the spec- the notice of special meaning says law and ethics. So, this is the ethics part of the discussion. The four areas that the statute requires the local code of ordinance to, of ethics to address is, obviously, the need to obey all applicable laws. Everyone always needs to do that. The need to uphold the integrity and independence of the board members' offices. The need to avoid impropriety in the exercise of the board members' official duties. Lawyers talk a lot about the appearance of impropriety. And the need to avoid even that. And the need to faithfully perform the duties of the office. Now, a lot of words. The Spring Lake Code of Ethics addresses all four of those areas, but has a, a lot of bullet points underneath. And some of them, um, are worthy of discussing here. I'll get to this in a minute. But, so, let me just read you some things in this Code of Ethics that I think apply here, to conduct during an election campaign. Board members should use their best independent judgment to take decisions based on the public good, and not on their desires or considerations of special interest. Board members should show respect for their offices and not behave in ways that reflect badly on those offices. Board members should not attempt to use their position as board members to influence any staff member in the execution of the staff member's duties. Board members should use the town's powers and resources for the benefit of the public, rather than any board member's personal or political benefit. Board members should promote public respect by avoiding the appearance of being or acting improperly. No board member should use his or her official position to make use of public or town facilities for private or political gain. Political or referenda campaigns shall not be conducted on town time or property. Board members should not request or permit the use of town-owned vehicles, equipment, materials, or property, or enlist town personnel for convenience, or favor, or profit, or political purposes, except when such services are available to the public general. Board members should avoid discreditable personal conduct. They should be potentially, or, sorry, personally honest and refrain from personal attacks. Let me stop there for a minute. How have we lost civility in this country in discussions of public policy? I talk with my students, young folks at the university level, all the time about this. Just because other people run around acting and speaking inappropriately without civility doesn't mean that I have to do that, or that you have to, any of you have to do that. If you have to do that, each of us individually has, I think, a civic duty and a responsibility to, to, to act honorably and speak with civility. And I don't see why we can't. End of that lecture. Board members should act as especially responsible citizens whom others can trust and respect. Remember that saying, the, the best of us? I think the public has a, a right to expect that the people they elect will strive to be the best of us, and act in their interests. That's right. And I think candidates need to conduct themselves that way during the campaign. Now, this code applies to incumbent members of board, not to other candidates. Which leads me to this. Wouldn't it be wonderful if non-incumbent election candidates would hold themselves to the very same ethical standards that apply to incumbent elected officials who also are candidates? So, I suggest that. Uh, let me tell you about two experiences I had, that were, that were both great fun. Successive years, years ago, I was invited by the National League of Cities to speak about ethics at the National League Cities Annual Conference. And I did that, first year, we were in Las Vegas, second year, we were in New Orleans. Here I am, talking about ethics.
Oh, my God.
In Las Vegas, and New Orleans. But one of the things I said is, some things are wrong, and some behavior is just wrong and unethical. And we know, when we're doing it, sometimes we know what's wrong and unethical. I gave them a rule, and let me just say it. Don't do or say anything that you wouldn't be proud to have your mother read about in the newspaper, or hear about. Doesn't that about coverage? My mother's ninety-four years old, and she still pays attention. To me, and to my brother. So, I, I think, I think every, every candidate ought to live by the, the principles that are stated in this Code of Ethics. And just not do things that you think are wrong, that you know are wrong. County courts, now you can't read that, but that is a statute in Chapter one sixty-A, which is the chapter of the general statutes that applies to cities. City employee political activity. Let me just say part of what it says. The purpose of this section is to ensure that city employees are not subject to political or partisan coercion while performing their job duties. To ensure that employees are not restricted from political activities while off duty, and to ensure that public funds are not used for political partisan activities. So, three different but related things. Now, if I become a public employee, do I give away, do I give up my First Amendment rights? No. I'm still entitled to speak up. So, the second paragraph, it is not the purpose of this section to allow infringement upon the rights of employees to engage in free speech and free association. I'm entitled, and employees are entitled to do that. It's not always smart to do that. So, every city employee has a civic responsibility to support good government by every available means and every appropriate manner. Good government. Employees should not be restricted from affiliating with civic organizations of partisan or political nature, nor should employees while off duty, while off duty, be restricted from attending political meetings, or advocating and supporting the principles or policies of civic or political organizations, or supporting candidates of their choice in accordance with the Constitution or its content, and laws of the state and the Constitution and laws of the United States of America. And it lists several things. No employee while on duty or in the workplace may use his or her official authority or influence for the purpose of interfering with, or affecting the result of an election or nomination for political office. So, while town employees on duty, political activity is off limits. Stay out of it. So, no employee while on duty may coerce, solicit, or compel contributions for political or partisan purposes by another employee. No employee may be required as a duty or condition of employment, promotion, or tenure of office, to contribute funds for political or partisan purposes. No one is supposed to lean on public employees to try to coerce them into such things. Obviously, no employee may use city funds, supplies, or equipment for partisan purposes, I should really say, for any election purpose, or for political purposes, except where such political uses are otherwise permitted by law. See what this says? Government employees are entitled to their, they're entitled to participate in election campaigns. I think it's probably wise, I would advise my friends who are city employees, to stay out of municipal election campaigns. I think my city managers would advise municipal employees to stay out of municipal election campaigns. City managers are subject to a Code of Ordinance, to, sorry, to a Code of Ethics, uh, for city managers, that very, very clearly says, stay out of political activity. And they live by that. And I preach that to my students. So, based on that, here's the quiz. Can a town employee put a, um, campaign sign for one of the candidates, for mayor or the Board of Aldermen, in their yard? Yes. They have a First Amendment right to do that. That may not smart, but they, but they have a First Amendment right to do that. Off duty, they have the right to engage in political activity. So, in the material that candidates were given by the Board of Elections, there's a, a lot of information, I won't go into it, uh, about something that you all that are running for office love so much, I know. Reporting contributions and expenditures. State law does require, unless you're going to raise or spend less than a thousand dollars. State law requires, um, filing of these periodic contribution and expenditure reports. And it's not fine, but people have the right to know where the contributions came from and what you all did with money, as candidates. And the County or State Board of Elections is available for consultation. Let me see if I have failed to answer any of these questions, and then, Mr. Mayor and board members, I am just about finished. I didn't directly address this. Are candidates allowed to spend time in Town Hall making political comments and causing employees to feel intimidated? No. Uh, except for what I said. The law is not any more explicit about that. But I think it is clearly wrong and inappropriate for any candidate to, as this question says, spend time in Town Hall making political comments and causing employees to feel intimidated. Shouldn't ever try to make anybody feel intimidated. That's wrong. But political comments, political activities about the election really ought to go on outside of Town Hall, not in Town Hall with town employees. I think I've answered all the questions. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna quit and sit down.
Any questions?
I am not prepared, probably, to answer questions off the top of my head. So, I would prefer not to. Uh, if anyone, let me make this deal. If anyone has any burning questions that we didn't discuss the answers to this evening, uh, feel free to send those to the town clerk, and she will forward those to me, and I'll get an answer. About that.
Thank you.
Well done. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Remove.
Move the second, all that big sign of ours, and close sign of that, just meeting and get by.